My name is Laura Salorio. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for your patience this morning. My name is Dr. Laura Salorio. I've been a resident of Salinas for 32 years, and I retired as an internal medicine physician with the county for that entire time, both at Intimidate Hospital and the clinics. I am definitely concerned about the health of residents of Monterey County. I'm also the president of Protect Monterey County, and I can assure you that Measure Z will be defended in the fullest, and we do plan an appeal with or without the county of Monterey. The oil industry can and does have negative effects on the health of residents who reside in proximity to oil and gas production areas, and there are many occupational hazards. Five workers died in Oklahoma on January 22nd of this year when there was an uncontrolled gas release which led to an explosion. When accidents such as these occur, there can be loss of life and contamination of surrounding soil and water. Robert David Taylor was a Chevron supervisor who was checking on a well which was using cyclic steaming, not even fracking. As he approached the well, he fell into a sinkhole created by destabilized earth created by years of cyclic steaming. He disappeared into it, and it took 17 hours to recover his body. Significant exposure to harmful chemicals used and produced during exploration and production of oil and gas can have a negative impact on health. Contamination of water can affect residents miles away. Cancer, increase in asthma attacks, perinatal complications such as premature birth, birth defects, et cetera, are all associated with living near oil and gas production. Chemicals used in oil and gas production, in addition to chemicals brought from deep in the earth such as naturally occurring radioactive substances called NORMs and hazardous ions such as aluminum, arsenic, copper, lead, and nitrate, which should stay deep down in the earth, all cause health risks. Increase in seismic activity can also affect the health of the community. In 1963, the Baldwin Hills Reservoir in metropolitan Los Angeles broke open, releasing 250 million gallons of water, destroying 277 homes and killing five people and affecting a square mile of residential area. A decade-long study looking at the cause of the disaster concluded that water injection, not fracking, for oil recovery in the Inglewood Oil Field nearby was a contributing factor. These concerns, and those of other speakers today, will hopefully convince you to protect Monterey County for its current residents and future generations. I would also, I also appreciate Commissioner Duflak's, you know, look at for conflict of interest. I would say, though, that Commissioner Duflak is a plaintiff in the Measure Z case, and I'm not sure really that would lead to a conflict of interest. So all to your respect, I would just consider that since most of the speakers today are from Protect Monterey County. Thank you so much.
Hi, good morning. My name is Jan Schreiner, and I'm a resident of Marina. I also serve on the Marina Coast Water District Board. These comments are not authorized by that particular board, and I just came back to let you know. I would like you to deny the proposal of these new oil wells, and I appreciate your time and effort in considering this matter. I know you're all volunteers, and I totally recognize a difficult decision as a volunteer. I make them as well. I have gone to a lot of meetings, and one of them that I went to was in King City. It was a Dover meeting. It was in relation to expansion of an injection area for untreated wastewater from the petroleum industry. I was surprised when Dover staff mentioned that these aquifers that wastewater, untreated wastewater, are being injected into are never going to be used. And for their reasoning was because agricultural lands are being converted to residential, and that Marina Coast Water District is building a desalination plant in Los Angeles. I found both those statements to be untrue, and I found it surprising that the staff did not mention Salinas Valley Basin as being critically overdrafted. So this is misinformation, not to fault Dover staff, but simply because the state record for body does not have a very broad scope, and it's not always getting the information that they need to make appropriate decisions. I also went to a county, Monterey County exemptions meeting in 2017. After listening for two hours to attorneys, I suggested that perhaps the exemption's language could include that if the process contains any known carcinogens or known neurotoxins, that there would be no exemption. Immediately, attorneys, including at least one here, rose out of their seats to explain there could be nothing new added to this exemption process. For me, being concerned about drinking water and the state of agriculture in our basin, these are not new concepts. New toxins, the carcinogens should not be injected into the aquifer. The litigated negative declaration, as described by Trio, is not as thorough, not as thorough as a complete and full environmental impact review. The legal issue of concern here, there are also lawsuits blaming and quoting oil industry for misleading public on climate change. Please keep that in mind and deny the request for this proposed special improvement.
My name is Denise Frischman. I live in Pacific Grove. I am the president of Communities for Sustainable Morning Now Day. First off, I want to thank you for denying Trio's application for drilling four new wells. That's the right thing to do, given the absence of Measure Z, which, you know, is being appealed. So the last word has not been said on that. And that measure expressed very clearly the wish of the majority of the voters in Monterey County. I experienced firsthand how strongly people feel about not expanding petroleum production on our county land. For seven months, I interfaced with hundreds, hundreds, and hundreds of county residents while collecting signatures to qualify Measure Z for the ballot and canvassing for the campaign. People voted for the preservation of our water resources, land resources, and protection of our climate. No equivocation whatsoever when we signed the petition and expressed support for Measure Z. People are very concerned about climate change and what the future holds for the next generations if we hold on to the status quo of expanded oil production. There are alternatives, and that's where we should put our efforts. By the way, those alternatives, when you read business reports, they create more jobs, and increasingly so, than the oil industry. And I would say that renewables ensures better national security and energy independence. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, planning commission members. My name is Judy Karas, and while I was writing here today with a friend, she said that I tend to overload my conversation with many details and that I should stick to the main points. So I'm going to make an effort to stick to the main points, and I'll try and be concise about it. Yesterday, I was substituting at Pacific Grove Middle School, and I had a chance to look at a book that the teacher had called Coast Alive: Teacher Guide to Activities that Explore Central California to North Coast. In it, they talked a little bit about the fact that, quote-unquote, "The entire coast of California is technically active with hotspots, active faults, and sequeurizing." And going and doing a little research online, this is documented, not just my opinion, the active fault slipstone that is greater than 10 millimeters a year, the red line goes right through central California. My concern is that even with plugged wells that we have here, they're not being monitored, and active wells, who knows what would happen were there a very severe earthquake? The damage to the aquifer could be severe. My second comment is that even though Javier Asara, our attorney general, has filed a lawsuit against the Bureau of Land Management because they want to say that we don't have to reveal toxic materials, or the oil companies don't have to reveal toxic materials, it's not guaranteed, and there may become a time when oil companies will be able to inject materials into the ground and not have to let the public know of the potential hazards from these. And I'm very concerned about that, even though in the letter that Steve Craig wrote to you, his first comment is that these wells have been drilled, this is quote-unquote, Steve Craig, "These wells have been drilled over the past decade. The M itself categorizes the shales in Haines Valley as very low value in terms of productivity, and the recovery by steam injection being the only economic means to withdraw heavy crew from the San Antonio Nation." And he says, dot-dot-dot. Therefore, the definition of these wells as test wells is improper and not accurate. I would encourage you to read his comments thoroughly. He has done research on this for 10 years. I know I attended the hearing that DOTGR did at Hilton some years ago, and he was knowledgeable back then. He's been doing the research. And in light of that, I wish to say that when DG, when the Division of Gas and Geothermal Energies, GGR, regulations, when they revise their regulations, at that time, in April, or prior to that, April 2013, there were a number of bills before the state, AD 1301, Moratorium on Fracking, AD 1323, Mitchell's, very comprehensive Moratorium on Fracking until the study was done, Advisory Commission doing great study, SB 4, which I think was the one that passed, and that requires that oil operators obtain a permit after the study was done on the environmental health and safety conducted that was done. So these all came about because it was the will of the people, that we were concerned about what's going on. And Measure Z passed because of our concern, not just idle, opinionated concerns, because of what we dread and we know about things going in other places. And DOTGR has pretty modest regulations. We do not have the most strict environmental regulations in the country, to be sure, but partly because some of the people that are working for DOTGR, they've had pacifists with the oil industries. And our governor too, much as he's good in other areas statewide, the oil companies really have a preponderance of support on their side in terms of government bodies. So I'm asking that you consider our comments, and please, please consider that. When things are being brought up from deep under the ground, this could risk damaging deep aquifers, which may need to be tapped in for potable water, just as is happening in Cape Town, South Africa. So, and also what can be brought up, and I think that red flags my time stuff? So I should not go on. Thank you so much.
My name is Michelle Rainey, and I live in Pacific Grove. I was a volunteer for Protect Monterey County. The reason Measure Z was passed by a majority of the voters was because of our concern for the safety of our water supply. Industry safeguards and regulations have been shown to be insufficient in protecting the potable waters. Four new exploratory wells could result in dozens of production wells, which is, I'm sure, their ultimate desire. Close to a major water supply for this county, which should be of great concern to county and the local jurisdictions. There are all the parcels that these wells are being drilled on adjoining Nacimento Lake Drive, and one of the parcels actually has the San Antonio River running through it, one corner of it. And I noticed none of their diagrams show the waters that are surrounding all of these drills. Early scientific analysis predicted that the risks associated with waste injection wells would be negligible. Now we are learning that there's a difference between scientific analysis and scientific evidence. Unfortunately, experience has indicated that disposing of waste deep underground has been linked to water contamination, destroyed ecosystems, toxic leaks, and earthquakes. The ruling of Judge Wills is not final, and an appeal will be filed. There should not be a glut of new wells approved while Measure Z is on appeal. This would negate the vote of the electorate and could result in irreparable harm to our water supply. I would ask the planning commission recognize the concerns and desires and protect our waters and confirm the findings and decisions as outlined in existing A for this hearing until there is a final decision on Measure Z. Thank you. Oh, one comment. One of the speakers talked about the negative impact, or the positive impacts of oil industry, but there are also negative industries on agriculture and the vacation industries in this county. And the cumulative effects of dozens of production wells was not considered in the Ramero Report, or Rincon Development Report that they referred to as being so wonderful.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Jamie Bell, and I'm from Temple Beach. Thank you for your decision to deny the request by Trio Oil to abark on exploratory drilling in entirely new areas of California. This new drilling clearly violates Measure Z's prohibitions. Still in litigation. I urge you to formally adopt that resolution denying their request for a permit. These proposed new wells are very close to Salinas River and its aquifers. It is increasingly important to protect our water supply. Earthquakes are an unpredictable danger, as has been discussed, and do not allow new areas to be endangered. Our oil, the oil companies lawyers have testified in court that Measure Z would put them out of business. Measure Z allows, Measure Z allows years for them to phase out these practices that are harmful to the environment. Oil companies have known since 1970s about climate change from their own scientists, research, and admittedly hired people to obscure that science. They have had all this time to change their practices. It is astonishing, astounding, to learn how much energy and water is used to extract oil, not just the test wells, but the actual extractions, and energy to transport it, refine it, dispose of byproducts, pumping them back into the ground. And so, much carbon is going into the atmosphere even before oil is burnt for fuel. While this is a local issue today before us, details of property rights, oil companies against hardworking government employers, employees, issues of tax, issues of exemptions and takings and so forth, we must see the bigger picture and do everything we can to restore balance in our unique climate's atmosphere. Ice caps are melting, the Great Barrier Reef corals are dying, glacier water supplies are melting off, just some examples. So please support Measure Z, and the majority of Monterey County citizens voted to protect our environment. Thank you.
I'm Lauren, and I'm from Suzie, Gaffrey, and I live in Pacific Grove. I want to join my friends and thank you for voting against the trio of oil companies' requests for drilling new wells last time. And I encourage you, and hope that you will do the same today. Do not let oil companies tear apart our land and poison our water, putting our air, climate, and water in danger. The potential harmful more wells is real. The planning commission should not approve this or any other project that would violate Measure Z. Please wait for the litigation to be resolved, since one of the components of Measure Z is that drilling new wells is not acceptable, and for good reasons, since the impact of transporting, refining, and burning oil and gas is devastating to the environment. Please vote against Trio or company's request for drilling new wells. Thank you.
My name is Sylvia Shi. I'm from Seaside, and this is 2018. I want us to look at the evidence on the ground because we can see the storms, the fires, the earthquakes coming in. We may not be able to link any specific event to a particular oil industry's action, but it's happening. We need to know that continue to drill for oil production is really counterproductive for our environment, for our life, for our future generation. I think that in the past, there might be some argument because we need oil, we need energy. But in today, we know that the progression in the sustainable field for the, you know, solar heat, sunlight, and the winds are really things we can harness, and it really creates more jobs. So for the future of our children, and for us, for the environment, don't dig up the earth anymore because you can imagine the earth being dug here and there. Things will happen. Earthquake will be more severe. So let's make a winning situation for the environment, for the children, for the board, and even for the oil companies because it's time to move forward. Thank you.
My name is Lenny Bouvier. I'm from Pacific Grove, and I am one of hundreds of volunteers that work all over the county. I, of course, most of my work up here to get the Measures Z passed. So that's what I want to mention first and foremost. I'm going to make this very brief. I do know that some of you have voted already against the, what is being requested, and I ask you who have not yet voted and must make a decision to please fully support your fellow commissioners who, by their recent actions, have already rejected the expansion of oil activity in Monterey County. And that's what we're asking for, and thank you for what you're doing.
Good morning. My name is Diana Hannington. I'm a resident of Monterey County, and ask that you deny the request by Trio to drill for new wells in Haines Valley. I've been a social worker in this county since 1992, and my expertise, if any, is in listening to people. I have participated in this conversation and listened to the hopes and worries and worries of fellow county residents. As I understand it, the role of the planning commission is not so different than my own. So listen to our fellows, and in this case, to consider how we use land. This community has clearly expressed our concerns and values in regards to sustainable land use. This voice was clearly heard in the vote for Measure Z where the citizens of Monterey County decided that our values and our priorities align with sustainable land use planning, and that increasing fossil fuel production in this county does not fit those community values and public planning decisions. As Californians who live here, we understand that water is our most precious commodity, if we even call it a commodity. Truly, in this state, water is life. Especially in the drought conditions that have marked our last decade and is expected to continue, we can't afford to increase overdraft of water resources or poison our water with toxic oil extraction byproducts. The oil extraction process for Monterey shale requires massive amounts of water, and the community can't afford to increase overdraft of groundwater in the interest or profit to a single enterprise. In addition, oil production activities take place adjacent to groundwater basins in the Salinas River, which feeds the entire Salinas Valley and empties into a national ruin sanctuary. Migration of toxic fluids from oil production into our groundwater puts our risk water for human and agricultural use. In addition, proposed drilling lies in a size of nifty active area near the San Andreas Fault Line, San Antonio's Rest Fault, and the Los Lobos Rest Fault. Damage to casings, wells, and fracture lines by earthquake puts our water at risk also. In regards to the negative declaration, I do wonder about the sources of evidence. The conclusions drawn are so different between Rincon and the Center for Biological Diversity that would benefit from more study. In addition, our long-deliberated general plan with broad public input is a guide to accepted standards of community development. And I wonder, is resource extraction compatible with land use plans and policies in the Haines Valley, which is part of the wine-growing corridor? Finally, litigation over Measure Z, which bans the drilling of new wells, does not yet settle. Appeals are in process, as you've heard. No action to approve new wells should be taken until the issue is settled. Please enact your role to listen to the people and honor your ethical obligation to plan for the benefit of this entire community and not just one. Thank you very much.
My name is Jacqueline Woodward, and I live in Carmel. And I have a simple and very direct message. We have a responsibility for future generations to address climate change right now. And it begins with stopping new projects like this from going forward.
My name is London Moran, and I just want to say ditto to that very short city comment that was just made about climate change. And just to remind us that not only did this county pass Measure Z, but we have also joined in a JPA for Monterey Bay Community Power, the point of which is to indeed wean ourselves off of gas and oil and fossil fuels and onto alternative, sustainable energy sources. And there's a reason for that, and a wisdom to that, and a yearning, I think, a deep kind of yearning on the part of our citizens who know that climate change is real and who know that it would have been better 10, 15 years ago to have made this transition and that we're going to have to live into the effects of some terrible tipping points that we've already passed. And if any of us has read even a little of that climate change science, we know that we're in for some trouble in the future. We've got to do everything now to mitigate, and that means weaning ourselves off of gas and oil. Understandably, the oil companies do not want to strand assets in the ground. They want to make all the money they can from their asset. But unfortunately, that asset is killing us. You know, collectively, it really is. And so, I agree that they need to transition to into another form of energy production, and I hope that they will do that, but they're going to fight until the bitter end. And we just have to make sure that the bitter end is not the bitter end for all of us and our future generations. So taking a cue from the citizens who have chosen community power as an alternative to PGA, for instance, please, I am pleased with you to reject that. Thank you.
My name is Mary Shaw Coran. I'm from Oromas, and I really echo Linda's comments. I think she really points out the need to look at the big picture. I think even though this is a very, you know, in the eyes of many people, just about a permit for four wells, you're making actually a decision about the kind of future that we will have. And I think, as my other friends have talked about, the citizens in Monterey County have made a very wise decision. And even though the judge has overturned two-thirds of it, we are very confident that it will be upheld at the appellate court or the state Supreme Court, its precedent setting. But I want to also now move to a very technical sort of level, a lower level, and that is about the fact that Trio Petroleum is a very small company. And one of the things you should remember about small companies is that they don't have that much assets. They live on the edge, and they put the citizens of Monterey County at risk more than the larger companies. And I just want to point out, I sent this in an email just recently to, folks might not have read it yet. There's a report from the county. I think Grace Bogdan was involved in it. I don't know if she was the planner, she's left since. It's about the permit that was granted to Trio Petroleum a few years ago. And that report, which I sent you, the PDF report, talks about the NOCO. They were also drilling in Haines Valley, you know, this area that we're looking at. They did fracking and acidizing, and the NOCO went bankrupt. They're not a very big company. The reason they went bankrupt is, I believe, because of the oil spill they were involved in in Santa Barbara. And so, as a consequence of the litigation, they went bankrupt. They did not, the rig... They did not, the report talks about the fact that Vinoco did not clean up their, you know, site. There was two wells where they did fracking and acidizing in Haines Valley. And I think that's very significant to remember that, that small companies put us at risk. And there's another oil field, Sargent Oil Field, which is north of Monterey County, just very slightly. They're dealing with Patriot Resources, which also went bankrupt recently. And Santa Clara County is having to deal with cleaning up, capping the wells. It's going to cost a million dollars. I was talking to the Central Coast Water Resource Board engineer about the wastewater ponds and wastewater injection wells in this county. They claimed, I can't remember now, I can dig it up and give it to you, but there's another small company that went bankrupt recently in Monterey, and they left a wastewater pond from their oil drilling, totally abandoned it. So the state and the owner of that property, who this oil company leased from, are trying to figure out how to clean that up. So I would like to point out to you that unless there's a very large bond involved that will guarantee a cleanup of this area, I think that by allowing Trio to move forward, we're putting our groundwater at risk. Thank you so much. And there's also letters from our attorneys, which we forgot to give you copy samples.
My name is Andy Shaw Coran. I too live in Oromos and was actively involved in the effort to pass Measure Z. And I know Measure Z is not the subject of this. The only thing you probably want to keep in consideration for Measure Z is that the overwhelming number of people, in spite of an 18 to 1 advantage by the oil industry, said that their general perspective is that they don't want to move down to a petroleum future. And in terms of the judge's decision regarding Measure Z, the one that's probably the faultiest part of this decision was the one that challenged your traditional police powers over land use. Many, many decisions have been made upholding counties and cities' rights to say no to the expansion of oil drilling. And that's what you're really talking about here, is the expansion of oil drilling activities. And whether you want to do this or not, whether you think it's the right thing to do, whether it's consistent with your general idea of development in this county, we're convinced that it'll probably end at the Supreme Court, that that will be upheld. Otherwise, you won't have much to say about almost any industrial activities and whether they happen or don't happen. In terms of this particular activity, one of the things they talk about is they're drilling in areas that were created by seismic activity, those folds that they're working on. This is a very seismically active area. It affects the infrastructure of oil development. We know from Tony and Graffy at Cornell that even in the best of situations, 5% of all oil wells leak from day one. And as they age, they leak more. So what you're talking about is creating avenues of movement from down below through shallow aquifers that affect us all. In terms of finding that this is or is not detrimental, I don't think you can make a decision based on what you've got right now that this is not detrimental because there's not been a comprehensive environmental impact review of this case. Our folks, our attorneys, have presented to you about 17 pages of concerns regarding the environment. And I think before you even consider moving forward in this area, you do a much more comprehensive review. So I thank those of you who voted to oppose this project. And first, I think you should stick to your guns. Thank you very much.
Hi, Wes Weissler, resident, community enthusiast, social environmental justice activist. I guess, you know, earlier, I got a friend who says that there's a lot of exporting actually happening from California oil too, like China. He's got an article for that, but that was one thing. They mentioned drilling for shale, which sounds kind of, I'm not sure about if that's really what we should be going after. We signed up for Monterey Bay Community Power. We shouldn't be so addicted to stuff that's dirty. We should be looking at clean energy, the wind, solar, and water. That's what we need to be focusing on more, you know, the tidal stuff. There's a lot of energy already in this world. We don't need to be making it a worse condition. We've had this thing that we've been going on for 70 years. In the 80s or 70s, the EPA said, no more. But yet they got an exemption. So we've been working off of borrowed time for 30 years, at least, 30, 40 years. We need to be maturing. What happens when people are winners? They want to win, they always got to win. We're making money, we need to make more money. The last guy I talked to, that seemed to be your primary objective, is making money. What do you do to make money? Well, what are you willing to sacrifice to make that money? Are we willing to subvert some information? And I talk about stuff like, look at how VP and all these other places that damages have already happened, and they never really mitigated to even being responsible to clean that up. And yet, we're still making billions of dollars a quarter. So where's the actual responsibility? I don't really see it happening the way these laws work in this country. We're not really worried about being responsible. And that's a business and government partnership. And it seems like that's a downhill toilet bowl we've been circling for a while. And we need to mature, we need to grow up. We need to be doing clean, sustainable, renewable energy, not fossil fuels because we're, the sinkholes. There's so much damage happening from all this climate change stuff. And we need to wake up and see what's happening. We're going to pop this ozone layer, and we're going to turn it into a dirt ball, just floating, and nothing's going to change. Like, how's that really going to affect the universe? Shouldn't we be more proactive than that?